I call this a special meeting of the board of firefighters, which is South King Fire Department. Public hearing for 2024 draft budgets. All the visitors are present except for Mr. Fuller, he has some questions. Mr. Barrett, any questions?
Hi, I'm Mr. Skits American, City Republic, which is one nation, and we got invisible liberty and justice for all. So, this is where Johnson, we're going to thank his brother. His brother. Alright, this is item four. Director Gannam would like to make some comments and give some responses to the question and comment service.
Right. Okay, thanks everybody for coming today. For those who participated or watched the district finance presentation that we did. There were a few comments during that session that we thought was appropriate to follow up on. During that presentation, we shared what our operations firefighter staffing levels were. And so what I had done is overlaid call volume over a 10 year period with operations staffing. And that chart drew some confusion because of how it was viewed. So I broke it out for everyone to see. This is the same call volume that was presented during that presentation from 2013 to 2023. 16,400 calls in 2013, and the increase is over the last 10 years to 25, over projected over 25,000 calls for this year. So I backed out the staffing levels and I put it into its own chart so that you could see the growth curve of the call volume during that period. Inches up, you know, a little bit 2014 and on up, but steady, steady climb at that point. But then it does start to begin to shoot up 20 into 21. So now let's take a look at what our firefighter frontline staffing levels were during the period. So we had budgeted 117 firefighters in operations 2013. We slowly were sort of steady and they began to climb up. And then in 2023, we had 138 budgeted. As you'll see later in today's presentation, we actually are budgeting beyond that for 2023. So you can see that the growth curve of staffing levels is pretty significant over the last 10 years. Those two were overlaid before and it drew confusion as to what I was trying to. So that's the staffing levels.
Yes.
Just a group. Also during that presentation, battalion chief Barrett asked if we could also show what other staffing levels are in the organization. And I'm going to show you here in a minute, sort of a summary of that. And I was talking with fire chief and we actually think it behooves us to do a staffing analysis. Because we've talked about how we've been under-resourced throughout the entire district the last decade. And how we made gains in the last several years to increase staffing. I went back and looked at budgeted positions during this period. And in 2013, we had 117 firefighters as represented on previous slide. We had four chief officers and four battalion chiefs for a total of eight chief officers. And then we had 22 support personnel. And that 22 support personnel includes members in finance, IT, you know, HR person, go down the divisions. It's not for the purposes of today's meeting, which is why I'm not getting into each division. But it's simply a snapshot of 2013, how many FTEs we have in this organization. And then in 2019 and 2020, the reason why I chose those years, because those were the years where we saw the lid lift passage in 2018. So we increased firefighter staffing. I think that provided some financial comfort to the administration at the time. So we increased from four chief officers to six chief officers. And then we started to, between this period of 2013 to 2019, we started to grow our divisions a year. But that also includes not only your support services, your finance, your team, but we also had a careers program. So you had three social workers, you had, you know, other, other support functions of the organization which contributed to the report. Can't see it on the screen here, but that's, that's a 38 going into 2020 and then a 42. So as you have tracked our budget processes over the years, you've seen that we've increased our staffing levels, not only in operations, but in our support rank and file. We had five chiefs between 2020 and 2023. And that drop right there is actually a result of Chief Church retiring and then us sort of maintaining staff score with the current. And with the addition of Chief Deffenbaugh and Chief Winter, we're actually back up to six in the budget. So in the last 10 years, from a chief officer standpoint, we've recovered from the previous level of four. We're at six, we've got four battalion chiefs, and then our 44 support staff personnel. So in talking with the chief, this sort of intrigues us and we think we want to do a deeper dive into what staffing levels look like. There's been a lot of fluctuations in those support positions. At one point in time, they had a finance director, we had a finance manager at one point, we had several social workers. So there's just been ebbs and flows in what that number represents over the years. But it would be very interesting to dive into that and take a look at. Two asterisks. Yeah. Yeah, I should have taken it out, but the reason why I had, I had actually documented out here that we include, we, between those years, we added a mechanic, we added a facilities individual, we added another HR person. I actually had a list describing what positions those were. In the 2023 budget, there's an asterisk there because of the 42 positions that were budgeted, two were, two were not filled. That was an additional training officer that the district budgeted for, because the consortium asked for an additional training officer. And he was a second community affairs officer. So of that 42, two went unfilled. So that's where it would be interesting to actually get into those support numbers and do a deep dive. Did we actually, it was a budgeted number, but did we fill the position, did somebody lead, how did we, what did we replace it, where, those types of things. You can see some significant growth, not only in frontline firefighters, but overall from 147 10 years ago to a proposed 200 next year. So that will conclude some of the questions and questions during the budget presentation. What's that?
Okay. This is unbalanced and reserve, reserves policy. We've sort of thought on and on for a long time, you know, what are reserves like, what about what balances when you happen to be responding, what are the various controls for a lifestyle? So we finally did sort of put it in a way that. But what you're, Kelsey, for use of policy there. So you've all received copies of both policies.
So Commissioner Gates is correct. Also presented during the finance presentation last month, we talked about the evolution of the fund balance slash reserve policy position the district has had. Since about 2008, it started with some very generic language in the budget that we will, that the board commissioners will maintain a certain amount of money. It was very vague. And then it was an $8 million amount and it kind of grew gradually. But our fund balances over this period of time that we talked about have stayed stagnant. So Commissioner Gates is absolutely correct. Kelsey has been the driver behind the effort to take sort of generic language in our budget and actually solidify it into a board adopted policy to give us, the district, direction on what our reserves should look like. And so the policy was developed, we shared it at the finance audit committee meeting a couple of weeks ago. And got input there. Today, you've all had, you all have copies of this policy. Today, the lights have happened. The station hopefully adopts that policy.
The motion is second to approve the policy.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we have got the policy, the unbalanced reserve policy.
The motion is second to approve the policy. Comments, questions, questions? Mr. Chairman, fast.
Absolutely. So we have several accounts shared through the budget associated, the general account, contingency fund, capital reserve fund, medical reserve fund, left one reserve. And this policy establishes the definitions for the funds, purposes for the funds. And also what balances, reserve balances, the board will set for us to put into place. So instead of a set amount of money that ends up becoming stagnant over the years, we adopt, we will adopt a policy that has a percentage threshold. So it's a percent of our annual operating expenses funded. So that hopefully over time, we are maintaining a fund balance level that is in line with what our revenues and our expenses are as we grow. Because as we've talked about and we showed at the last two retreats, our lowest fund balance was $1.9 million in 2018. Although our monthly expenditures had more than doubled. And so we need to ensure that with, with, in this budget will be nearly a $4 million a month expenditure. That we have enough funds in the bank to actually make ends meet. And then, as you talked about, Commissioner, the example of the earthquake and the disasters and our need to have funds available to support the community. So we established what the funds are, what the minimum balances will be, what the acceptable uses of the funds will be. And how those funds will be replenished. So if they need to be, if we need to go before the board to get authorization to dip into a contingency fund or a capital reserve fund or a rainy day fund. Then the, there's some expectation on the part of the governance board and on the part of the district that it will be in fact replenished in some timely fashion. Am I missing something? Chief Crosson?
No. What are you doing with the fire violation?
So I, I see on George's page, it's that it says, it says 223.1 reserve balances. Second paragraph sentence, or single sentence says, the combined reserve balance should be approximately 18 to 30% budgeted expenses. So Joe, that would be a little less than one third of the annual operating and capital expense. Is that just operating?
Operating.
And, and Kelsey, in your research with, for example, the government finance officers association, GFOA, maybe ICN, any others. What did you find was the recommended percentage or number of months that should be in emergency reserve or a major disaster urgency, that's true.
So the 18 to 30 is why it's consistent with best practice for GFOA. The auditor's office also has best practice for our general fund balance, which is a minimum of 60 days and a best practice of 90 days. So a little bit of a combination.
Thanks. Any other questions?
There's no other questions. There's a motion in a second to approve the policy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Very demanding, sir. Thank you. Good work, Kelsey. Okay. Item number six, 2024 draft budget presentation and public hearing. The budget we're going to look at today is our draft budget. There will be no action taken on the budget today. Depending on what comments we get, et cetera, it will be approved at the regular November meeting, November 28th. So I'll ask the chief and then his staff to present the budget. Commissioners are welcome to ask questions. At the end of the entire budget presentation, if there are any public comments, questions, we'll take those at that time. Alright.
Thank you, sir. I just want to start off and saying I'm really excited about the 2024 budget. It does a lot for us. It addresses a lot of the things coming out of District Gigi Bridge Plan, the priorities from the bridge plan. It does give us the opportunity to add eight new staff to the line, which is always incredible, is always encouraging news. I do have to say thank you to, to Joe and Kelsey and the admin staff that have worked so hard on the budget, as you could see by the policy. They do a lot of work behind the scenes to keep us on the straight and narrow and, and make sure that we are living up to our responsibilities when it comes to our budget and our spending habits. I'm happy to say that this budget continues to build on continuity of last year's budget. It also continues to build our capacity to adjust and change as revenues adjust and change. It provides the, the flexibility for us to, to adapt with the environment. Director Gannam and I sat down, we talked about priorities. Everything that's in the budget, I have agreed with. Some things that have been removed from the budget or some of the changes were at my direction to Joe. And I fully endorse the 2024 budget you're about to have presented to. So Director Gannam.
Thanks, chief. Before we get started, a couple of changes for this budget. As you can see from the homepage, it looks, or the front page, cover, cover page, it looks a little bit different than previous budgets. We're now three iterations into this process and so we're a lot more comfortable about what we can and can't do and start making some changes. We've added a table of contents. The online presentation might be okay, but for the individuals in the room, we're on a split screen here. So I don't know how, how it will look being split across four screens, but bear with me. So there might be some occasional adjusting and scrolling, which is, will be new for us. The other thing that we're going to do a little bit differently is historically, we have gone through this budget line by line, which makes for a very long two to three hour process. We are not going to do that today. The benefit of having Chief Van Valkenburg coming from an outside agency, a city where they're more concise and it's more of a summary presentation. I wholeheartedly accept his request to shorten this so that we're not sitting here listening to me talk more than I need to talk. So I'm not going to read the executive summary. I will just present highlights for not only the executive summary, but everything that falls below. So let's get started. Here's our new table of contents that we've added to the budget this, this year. So highlights for, please don't bother reading this, highlights for this budget process. As the chief indicated, everything in this budget is in line with the strategic bridge plan. So the funding pillar, the desire to find a sustainable funding mechanism past next year. The need to increase our firefighter staffing levels. There's a theme in this budget cycle. As opposed to previous years where we were trying to play catch up with capital equipment. So there's significant investments in, in capital. This budget is more people and people that are specific to accomplishing the goals of the strategic bridge plan. So that is a reoccurring theme in this budget. Also a highlight from this year, as everybody knows, we went out for a lid lift one year earlier than we had originally planned on. Through the strategic bridge plan discussions, nowhere in those discussions was the idea to run a lid lift one year early. But as we got deeper into the negotiations, labor negotiations process, and we looked at the financial cliff that we are, can expect to occur after next year. It became more apparent to us that we should probably request and ask the public to support a lid lift one year early to provide some financial cushion for us going into next year. And the public supported that, as you will see in this budget, and we'll show you what we're able to do with that. But we still have the financial cliff. It's just not as deep, but we have a financial cliff after next year. Also of significance this year, Chief Vatapton retired. And before his retirement, he initiated a name change to simply South King Fire. And so we are currently, as you all are well aware, trying to make those changes across the organization to drop the ampersand and rescue from our name. That is not a rebranding effort, so there is no money in the budget to do a rebranding. It was simply a small adjustment to our name. And then the board, of course, appointed Chief Van Valkenburg as our interim fire chief in September as they conduct a process. So those are kind of the highlights for those following the district and, and the items that we've been working on this year. Obviously, the emphasis of staffing. As we talked about in the, in the district finance presentation and as we just shared a few minutes ago. We have made a concerted effort to increase our firefighter staffing levels since 2020. And this budget, as you'll see in a minute, gets us, if approved, up to 146 frontline firefighters. So that is something that we're all very proud of and that is something that we would not have been able to do if the lid lift was not in place. Also, you'll see in this budget, through the hiring of, of Chief Deffenbaugh and the appointment of Chief Winter. There will be a focus on starting a new MIH program to replace the cares program that was terminated a few years ago. So there is some money in the budget to handle that. And then, of course, we've made efforts over the last few years to also invest in our capital replacement program. And we are fortunate that the budget supports another infusion of capital for replacements next year. Okay. Property tax revenue. With the approval of the lid lift in August, next year we will collect the statutory maximum of $1.50 per thousand. With that amount, property taxes on existing parcels are estimated at $40,674,119 next year. And new construction at $334,792 for a combined property tax revenue of $41,800,911, something like that. That's enough. Let's just say $41 million next year. So this is an increase over the 2023's levied amount of $35,421,798. Tax levies, re-levying taxes for next year are coming in at $145,385. So due to the erosion of the $1.50 to $1.25 this year. If we had not run the lid lift, taxes, tax revenue for the fire district next year would have come in at about $1.9 million, just shy of $2 million. So that's what we would have had to have worked with next year. Eight firefighters. Next year costs the district $1.2 million. Total salary and benefits for a incoming firefighter is $150,000. So hiring eight firefighters cost us 1.2. So if we had been limited to $1.9 million, there's not much left there to increase salaries, adjustments, inflations all across the board. So you can see the importance of collecting the statutory limit and what it can do for us. Also in 2024, as we've discussed many, many times, it is the final year of our maintenance and operations levy. So after next year, if we don't have something in place, we will have a $3.75 million budget full. One thing that I've noted the last few years, these numbers will typically change prior to budget adoption and sometimes even change after budget adoption, because the county will send us a final assessment after the budget has been adopted. In fact, this was sent to the commissioners last week for draft review and I got a new updated amount yesterday. So this will change one more time before budget adoption, but it should be very close to what is being presented today. So when we capture total, total projected revenues, including property tax, the maintenance and operations levy and miscellaneous revenues and reimbursements. We will hit $50,496,957 next year. We're officially, will be a $50 million organization.
Joe, just a quick question. When does the budget have to be in the county?
The 30th of November. So the board of commissioners will adopt it on November 28th at the regular meeting. And then upon adoption and signing the resolutions, we will send everything to the county. The next day, if not that night. Hey, Joe, very tight this year.
Good question. What's the impact of the nonprofits who are exempt from paying taxes, what's the impact to us?
Well, I don't know that I have an answer to that, but in the executive summary, it's highlighted as one of the areas that we will be focusing on in the strategic planning process. Also, the TIP. So we have nonprofits, we have the tax increment area that the federal way, city federal way is likely to move forward on. So we have multiple outside factors that will contribute to what our tax revenue looks like moving forward. Do you have anything, chief, you want to add to it?
No, I think we captured it all. Okay.
Okay. Budget highlights for next year. Total operating expenses for 2024 are budgeted at $46,399,195, which is an increase over the 2023 budget by 12.61%. Or $5,195,010. Highlights for the 2024 budget include eight new firefighters to increase staffing. The hiring of an additional eight to fill vacancies. So we have current vacancies and, and expected vacancies next year. So between those two, the chief and human resources and his team are going to be very busy hiring 16 firefighters. We have funding for a financial analyst position to assist with our funding efforts next year. And this one, the funding for a communications position. So this has been in the budget and has been recycled several times. It was our desire to add an additional community affairs officer. That won't happen, but we still have a need to have a communications position help us with our outreach efforts and content development. So this is to hire a civilian position into the organization to help us. We have the appointment of a deputy chief of EMS, Chief Deffenbaugh. And we have the appointment of district chief, chief winner. So that's also represented in the budget. And then we have wage adjustments based on the outcome of negotiations. And wage adjustments for non-contract personnel also in this budget. And we are going to expect an increase in LNI rates next year. So all in all, there are a lot of contributing factors that lead, that contribute to a 12.61%.
I just, Joe, you didn't highlight it with a bullet, but I noticed as I went through, scanned through the line items, some pretty significant, in many cases, double digit increases in material supplies, services, contracts. Is that a reflection of the fact we've been at this 40 year high inflationary period as well?
Absolutely.
And that's also reflected in the 12.6% increase?
That is reflected in the 12.61. And when we, I won't go line by line, but I will call out some specific increases that are contributing to this. That is reflected in the twelve point six one. And when we, I won't go line by line, but I will call out some specific increases that are contributing to this.
You know, because it is unusual and significant, perhaps significant part of that, I would suggest adding a bullet to that effect so that whoever looks at this document later on would realize that that's inflation, unusually high inflation is.
That's a good point.
Is also a, uh, a part of the reason that's, uh, a double-digit digit increase.
It's a good point. Oh, I just wanted to point out real quick, um, they are budgetary impacts, but I want to make sure everybody's on the same page when it comes to the deputy chief of EMS and Chief Winter. The reason that those are adds is those are new positions in the twenty-twenty-four budget. We went to the commissioners and asked for permission to hire a couple of months early, which you guys graciously granted to us. But that's a significant budgetary impact that, uh, in, is included in that twelve percent. But I just want everybody to understand why, you know, why are they, why are they here, but they're new? They're, they're new because we were allowed to hire a couple of months early. Okay.
Although, isn't it true that it's only a net increase of one chief?
Yeah.
Officer, because you showed just going back to six from five. So even though we've added two chief officer positions, one of them, one of them is, is filling up.
There's, there is a replacement, which is why it said not the hiring of, but an appointment. Um, because to his point, we did get permission to fill and hire those positions early. So I didn't want the budget to reflect it saying a new additional. It's what we currently have. Alrighty. So this is a snapshot of our expenses, um, in twenty-twenty-three compared to expenses today. And you'll see it overall twelve point, I must not have updated the other, other number, but it's twelve point four eight percent increase, um, overall. So one of the things that, and this is our draft presentation, but as these numbers change, in fact, Chief Prossen sent, uh, King County Fire Investigations quote, last couple of days, yeah. So when things change last minute, every, um, every capture has to be updated throughout the budget, you know. So, uh, before budget adoption, this will be fine tuned, but there is a slight discrepancy between what was stated above and here. Okay, our capital budget for twenty twenty-four. MIH program, uh, Chief Deffenbaugh, uh, doesn't quite know what the program will look like yet, but we do have money from King County EMS that we are sitting on. And so, uh, we've thrown in some money into the capital budget to outfit that program. If you recall the agreement that we had in Valley Regional before, uh, they provided the vehicles. So we actually never really had our own vehicle. So uh, there's some money for that purpose, uh, addition of motor pool vehicle, um, and then your typical of striping and lighting, et cetera, packages. So total staff vehicles next year, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, the heavy rescue, this is the first, uh, unit that we did a lease payment on. And so this will be our second lease payment. Uh, so this is now going to be an annual lease, uh, obligation on our part in the budget. Tools, operations tools and equipment coming in at a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, information technology, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. This includes, uh, a replacement of all of the mobile data computers and all of the cradle points. And, um, if you watched the presentation, uh, last month, these MDCs were replaced with the big bond. So this is another example of, uh, that technology now being outdated and us having to replace it again. So we're able to do that in our capital schedule now. Um, station improvements, a hundred and eighty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars. I'm sorry, there's a line there. Facilities Division has indicated that we need to do structural engineer testing and sprinkler, sprinkler UL testing. And we also need to rekey the district. It's been some time since that's happened. And then what's most important to most of us are starting to remodel the bathrooms in the organization. Um, as many know, the bathrooms are severely outdated and did not get updated with the safety improvement bond. That wasn't the purpose of the bond, but the bathrooms need a refresh. And so, uh, the fire chief has made it a priority to start replacing the toilets. All right. So, also new in this budget process is the addition of a capital contingency fund. And so what we've, to, to chief, to Commissioner Berger's point, there have been cost increases in the last few years. And so what's happened is the teams will go out and they'll get a, a budget quote for a project in August or September. And then by the time they actually get to doing the project in the following year, the costs have gone up significantly and we've had no way really to capture that. And so, working with finance, uh, Kelsey's recommendation that we actually establish a contingency fund for capital so that we're not over budget because of those outside factors.
So that's, that'll be an appropriated contingency.
Yes. It's a ten percent over, it's captured, it's captured ten percent overall here, but it should be about ten percent of each project.
So the board won't have to supplement the coverage.
That's correct. Okay, capital carryover for the reasons just described, supply chain issues. Um, we have carried over capital the last few years. And, uh, Ken, although he's tried his hardest to buy vehicles, he hasn't bought enough vehicles. So he's got some money to, uh, carry over into next year. Uh, some fire hose replacements, um, are still outstanding. And then, uh, we've had some changes in the chief ranks the last few years. And I'd have to go back to the records and find out why, but there was a request last year to fund seventeen thousand dollars in fitness upgrades. And, um, I think that got lost in translation somehow because the team currently managing that believe that they somehow lost some money. And they did not in fact lose money because there's an allocation there of seventeen thousand. Chief has, uh, recommended we carry that over and that the team be able to use that. So next year, capital carryover is one hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars. Okay. Fire levy rate, when we, um, bring the fire, our statutory regular property tax levy back up to a dollar fifty, and we add in the maintenance operations levy, which is anticipated to be at about thirteen cents next year. And the safety improvement bond, the thirty-nine million dollar bond, which costs taxpayers about ten cents per thousand, our total levy rate for the fire district is projected to be a dollar seventy-three next year. If I give time, I will throw in a chart under prop, assess property values, but, um, this time last year, assessed values in our jurisdiction was twenty-eight point four billion dollars. The numbers from the county this year are projected twenty-seven point three, which is a little over a billion dollar reduction in property values. And if you listen to the presentation last month and I shared the projections from the King County, they were anticipating about a six percent decrease in property values this year. And then things maybe a three percent next year and then things sort of evening out. Early on in our conversations, I shared that our citizens and some of our commissioners were receiving property tax statements with seven to nine percent reductions. The first numbers from the county actually mirrored that. So we were right in line. But as we've gotten updated projections from the county, that, um, deficit has closed. And so this equates to a three point six one percent reduction in AVs current across our jurisdiction. So we went from a seven to nine, which is really bad, to just under four. So, Joe, yes.
To Commissioner Thompson's earlier comment of, uh, tax-exempt residential properties. As I recall, the county actually does an assessed valuation of those properties. But what I don't know is, and maybe you do, and so this is my question, do they know what those are by jurisdiction? So for the city of Federal Way, city of the mountains, what those might?
They don't break it out by, uh, one second here, let me see if I can find. They don't break it out by jurisdiction. But there is a roll-up, um, that was recently added to the worksheet.
What I was going to suggest is under this one line here, uh, property taxes based upon a projected AV and so, so, so forth. Uh, perhaps that number, an additional sentence identifying that number would be useful for our own information for the public.
I'll do that. Um, in fact, this year, they, they changed the, uh, levy worksheet and they've added taxes exemptions and they've added, uh, tax increment financing implications too, to the spreadsheet. So, uh, I'll take a look at their, that new spreadsheet and see if I can't plug in those factors that you're recommending.
Because the twenty-seven billion doesn't include whatever, however many millions are for those.
That's taken out, that's correct, yeah. Snapshot view of our projected revenues, uh,
Excuse me, one other point. Could then multiply the AV rate, excuse me, the levy rate to see what the actual loss?
We can do that.
I think that would be useful information, don't you?
Oh, you bet, especially for future years, see, uh, it's increasing.
On the, on the tip, on both, on both, actually.
Yeah. Okay, projected revenues, uh, property taxes or maintenance operations levy, money from King County EMS, our contract with Valley Regional. We have a plethora of miscellaneous revenue sources, but the one that I want to highlight here is new for, uh, next year is six hundred and two thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. King County Corps, MIH, twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-three. So this number up above, um, this annual number that we receive from the county, the two point eight million dollars, includes our services and MIH money, but those are funds that are, um, uh, available to us upon spending and requesting reimbursement. And so because we did not have a CARES program the last couple of years, we have been thanking those funds. And so, um, the finance team has provided the chief and I what those numbers are exactly. It happens to be six hundred, two thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. And so ultimately, the chief will decide, um, but it sounds like that will be money available to, uh, the MIH startup costs. Because the MIH allocations every year from the county should help pay for the program. And so right now, the fact that we're, we've, we've banked this money, that's one-time money. And so the purchase of a couple of vehicles, equipment, software programs, whatever they need to get the program started, we've got some money from the county for them to work with. But then once the program is established, the reoccurring revenue from the county is what helps fund the program. So, this is pointed out in this budget because that amount should not be there next year. And if it is, it's, should be a lot less. And second is because when we add that six hundred and two thousand dollars, that's actually what pushed us into the fifty million dollar mark. Because our budget prior to that was forty-nine million.
Guess they should know this by now, but what, what's the line item that captures reimbursement from the state? Uh, for deployments on wildland, wildland fires?
Well, we currently don't use a line item for that because what we, we, what we get back from DNR is strictly wages and benefits. That's what we give back. And that money goes back into the general fund for staffing. So we don't, we don't have a defined line item. If we were to get reimbursement for a piece of apparatus, we would have to have a line item to account for that. Does that make sense?
No, because it's a revenue, so you have to record it to a revenue.
We do, yes, we do. And the state funded grants, it's the second to the bottom.
Are you, which page are you on, Commissioner?
I think the same one you have.
Okay.
Yes. Uh, second from the bottom, the state funded grants is where we put that in there. It's a zero dollar because we don't know how many. Yeah.
That is an off, it's an offset. Yes, I misunderstood your question, but it has to be reported. Yeah, right. But we don't, we don't segregate it as a revenue. It goes back to general. Right. And that's relatively new in the last couple of cycles as finance has demonstrated that we need to be capturing and recording these things. Um, it's a transparency issue and it's also a proper accounting of the revenue issue. So, okay. So we've got our, uh, total revenues at fifty, uh, million, almost fifty and a half million, um. And we take a look at the snapshot here of, uh, tax revenue, maintenance and operations, and our miscellaneous minus our total operating expenses, capital projects, and a reserve contribution into a rainy day fund. We have about a one percent surplus, which is exactly where we have been aiming to be every year. Um, talked about this last year, that we had previously budgeted, we took out one percent in delinquent taxes. But Commissioner Gates pointed out, you know, why are we doing that? We always collect money. Uh, but at the same time, you need a little bit of cushion there. And so we are hitting the mark exactly where we want to be, um, at the bottom line. Okay, fund balances. This has been updated from last year now with the information and the policy that the board just adopted. Uh, and as it states, the Board of Commissioners has established a goal of maintaining the following minimum balance thresholds as defined by policy. So the general fund, uh, has, should have a minimum of sixty days of a, average expenses or the equivalent, equivalent of seven point seven million dollars. Contingency cash fund should have eight percent or three point seven million. Capital fund, ten percent or four point six million. The insurance reserve fund, uh, ten percent or four point six million. Um, our employee medical reserve fund for our self-insurance program as defined by the state auditor of the state, and then our left one medical fund. So when we take all of these funds together, roll them up into one sort of snapshot, um, our projected fund balances going into next year is, will be just under thirty million dollars.
And we don't have as much in the rainy day fund as, uh, as we wanted.
That's correct. So this is the establishment, establishment of a new fund. And let's, let's talk about that briefly, if we may. Because of the financial cliff next year, and I've modeled this out, um, it's a little bit outdated because I modeled it out early on into the budget process. But with the hiring of eight additional firefighters next year, with the cost of living adjustments and the contractual commitments that we have offered to the union in labor negotiations, if we package all of that up, we increase it in twenty-five, and we don't have a replacement to the let, to M and L, we are in the hole immediately. We are in the negative. So, without a proper rainy day fund, we are either making drastic budget cuts and, and reductions in force again, or a combination thereof to make ends meet. That's not a situation we want to do again. So the establishment of this rainy day fund, while things look good this year, will set us up when we get into that area. Chief gave me a letter today from a consultant that we used on the benefit charge many years ago here when we failed. The bottom of that letter stated, we do not recommend running a measure next November. Because it's a hotly contested presidential uh, year. So, you know, he handed it to me, he laughed, he said, read the bottom paragraph. All of our planning right now is to, to run something next year. So there's all of these influences and it's not going to be a slam dunk. So making sure we have capital in the bank to help keep us afloat and help people, people stay employed while we figure out how we make things work is extremely important to us. Thanks for pointing out that, that the establishment of, of, the establishment and infusion of this fund is still short of what the goal should be.
What should that number be if the policy were fully?
Four point six, I believe. Was it four point six?
Four point six.
And right now, we can put two point five. Let me also state that when we modeled out what the lid lift would do for us with AVs actually better off than they are, we felt like that cushion would have been more significant. And when we modeled this out, we said we can hire new firefighters. We should be able to pay for two new fire engines. And we should be able to set a significant. and we should be able to set a significant money aside as for a rainy day. When AVs went down, that cushion went like this. So what did we do? We said, well, we can still hire eight, but we're going to have that area in twenty-five, which was going to be of concern. We can buy engines, but we're not going to pay cash right now. We're going to lease that. We'll do a down payment out of capital and we'll lease them for now. If things look good for us with a benefit charge or maintenance and operations levy after next year, funding should be okay, we'll pay them off. We don't want to get into a situation where we're paying hundreds of thousands of dollars in lease interest. So there's a plan, but um, that plan changed when revenue, when AVs started to, to go into the negative. Okay.
Yeah, and we also adjusted non-response hiring. So we had some additional positions that were requested in the budget. We prioritized the eight new positions over positions that were asked for in the budget process so that we could support response first, because that is the priority. That's, we know we have a deficit. So that was the primary focus, was making sure we added those eight positions.
That's correct. Yep.
If you scroll back up to the general, the general, that's as of January first, so that sixteen billion, that's supposed to get us through April too. So that balance technically is in a reserve, it's just getting us through until we collect in April.
Sure. That's correct. And I, I spoke about that. Thanks for pointing that out at the presentation that the fire chief used to ask finance for, what's your projected balance? And so that, that's essentially what it would have been. So we looked at those higher numbers and said, oh, we're floating in cash, we're good, but those are committed when the board adopts a budget, they're committing those funds. So you have to back that out. Okay.
The, the numbers sort of artificially hide away because we just got our property tax revenue.
That's, that's exactly right.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's why you've got fifteen million sitting there.
That's right.
What does it go down to?
Well, in uh, in uh, the spring of twenty eighteen, it was one point nine million. Now our lowest has been five?
Yeah, I think it's six.
Five or six. So we've been monitoring this and uh it's interesting for people that don't believe the numbers that we're presenting here. Uh, we get uh statements from King County every single day, every day. And when I mentioned that Kelsey and her team put all of the work into our cash flow analysis, all of those daily balances were plugged into a spreadsheet. And so we can look, yesterday it's higher or lower than it was the day before, this and that. So the data is the data, you know? Okay, anything else on, on this? Source of funds, uh eighty-one point five percent uh comes from property tax, but when we actually uh add the M and O levy and the other agreements that we have with Burfa, King County EMS, those are all property tax-driven revenue sources as well. So ninety-seven percent of our revenue comes from property tax.
In, yeah, the question, in regards to that, uh Burfa just passed their Prop one and they're going to build a station in the north end of uh their area. That's going to probably affect our contract with them in two years, I would imagine, maybe three.
Uh, potentially, they've, they've not been, they, they haven't had enough information to share yet um, on what their total plan is. But yes, they've, they've started design phase and they are in the process of looking at building a new station in that area. How that's going to impact this, we're not completely sure yet. I've started having this conversation with Chief Olson.
Yeah, there's, that station is on Auburn Way, so it's not a big chunk except on the hill, but uh, but it will have impact without them. But how big that contract area?
Okay, use of funds, eighty percent of our budget is allocated to personnel. Um, if you go back to uh years prior, I think this number was closer to ninety percent, eighty-nine point seven or give or take. But um, when we actually budget for capital and contingency and reserves and all of those things, that number changes, but eighty percent is still a significant amount of money that goes towards your budget. And as you have seen previously, we've actually increased our staffing over the years too. So um, this is a better reflection of how the money is being distributed. All right, let's talk about divisional budgets. And it looks like we're already in, almost an hour through, so I'm going to try and speed it up a little bit. Okay, uh, there's a projected increase for commissioner compensation going from a hundred and twenty-eight to a hundred and fifty-seven for?
Your first raise in five years.
Yeah, that's a very, very lucrative spot to be in, uh, Commissioner Birds down there. Sure you signed up for the money. Uh, so the first increase in five years is uh projected to um increase our budget by just shortly, by just under fourteen thousand dollars. Uh, and there was also um a change that we're not going to participate in WIFKA anymore, so there's a reduction in dues. So overall, just a very slight increase to the commissioner budget of ten percent. Uh, the audits, we do pay for our audits every year and um based off of their projections, it's about an eight and a half percent increase to the audit costs annually. On that note, real quick, uh, we've not gotten word from the auditor when they intend on wrapping up the previous audit and starting a new one. So just a heads up, I think they're playing catch up like everybody else. Okay, this is an area where I will speak a little bit more to the line items. Um, next year is our seventy-fifth anniversary. And so to commemorate that, we've created a oh seven five budget code. Um, and we have some money funded next year for uh district anniversary recognition events. Um, and the chief uh and Lori and others are plan on putting on some events and connecting with the public and really advertising the fact that we've come a long way in seventy-five years. So we've got a little bit of money set aside next year, but that's one-time money. It'll go away after that. You have anything you want to add, Chief?
No, you're good. Okay, based on the earliest of the volunteer districts that existed prior to here.
Day one.
The very first, for the very first one of them.
February nineteen forty-nine.
So a little bit of uh increase there. We have uh negotiations is still ongoing, so we're making sure that we're funding that adequately. Um, our strategic bridge plan is uh well-funded. We use Waldron and um some other consultants for those efforts. Uh, Commissioner, Chief and Volkerberg uh has been working to uh hold a retreat, a joint labor management retreat. And so um, and there's also some other divisions that have requested to ha- have some team building facilitation and retreats on their own. So we've got some money budgeted next year to, to do that. Utilities, fuel, everything else is going up um, as well as our casualty insurance liability. So the general budget has had a pretty big hit of sixteen point six percent increase overall. The administration, um, and if you have followed us the last few years, we've been moving personnel uh within divisions as we sort of shake out and settle on how things are going to function. Uh, this increase of, of five hundred and sixty-four thousand is really a result of moving people into the administration and out of like business operations and some of the other divisions they were in. Uh, but this budget includes um nine administrative personnel. For a total increase of thirty-eight and a half percent, but again, that's not exactly accurate because of the personnel moves. Business operations finance has a significant reduction as well. So finance used to be uh finance, I financed uh data and GIS and Kelsey uh has requested that finance just be finance. And so um, and they don't have to worry about sharing, sharing training money and overtime money and this and that. So we cleaned that up. And um, there's a significant reduction in moving people out of the finance division. But this does include the additional position mentioned in the highlights of a finance person. Overall, a twenty-three point nine percent reduction in finance, which is exactly what we want finance to do, save us money.
Good job, Kelsey. Thanks for taking one for the general.
Okay, the HR division. Um, last year, HR was heavily funded because we had a grant uh through the Department of Commerce for uh workforce development DEI. That grant is uh no longer in place. Uh, it's been completed and we got the money. And so there has been some movement of funds within the finance or the human resources division. But the most significant change uh to their budget is um hooking up with a company to help us with our L and I claim management. Uh, this is an area, lead management is, is very important to the HR division as well as us. And so um Mary and her team has partnered with a company to help us square some things away on lead management and hopefully save us some money in the long run. So after we make some reductions on the workforce development program and we fund the lead management program, overall, it's a ten point four percent reduction in HR. I will point out real quick that the compliance policy reduction is software that's actually the Lexible software. It's being moved into a software line item and out of HR. Okay, operations, this is the big guy. We have, if you take a look at salaries, total salaries, increase of eleven point one percent or two million one hundred thirteen thousand. So this includes hiring firefighters um and projected increases due to contract negotiations. Overall, the total operations budget is increased just short of three million dollars at thirteen point three percent. Italian chiefs?
Joe, on overtime training, it's a significant, dollars aren't used, but it's a significant reduction. Is that a reflection of what it's been tracking this year? So the thirty-five thousand is closer to what annual expenditure really is, or is there some real reduction in training on an overtime?
Yeah, so the DEI, I'm sorry, the overtime training budget was funded for officer development and DEI workforce development training. Those are sort of one-time infusions to get everybody up to speed and trained, and so that was backed out. Uh, backed out. Italian chiefs, uh, status quo minus anticipated cost of living adjustments. Okay, this is, this EMS budget is actually a zero-lined EMS budget at this point. Uh, because Chief Devonbaugh hasn't had a chance to work with the chief on what it is we're going to do here. So we expect that this budget will look far different next year. Uh, the only money that was in there previously were clinical reviews, which are um, is now going, going to be handled through the consortium, correct?
Yes.
So uh, we no longer have to fund that, and so we have zero money allocated for EMS next year. Our specials, our uh special teams, uh rescue and marine hazmat are all driven by uh their request during the budget process for movement of uh monies or allocations for training or uh the likes. Overall, for the rescue team, a five point nine percent increase. The marine team, a twenty point eight percent increase. Hazmat, a twelve point nine percent increase and the swimmers at a thirty-one percent increase. And that's the numbers aren't big, it's a big swing in the uh percentage, but uh Captain Michaels has a desire to uh do some more training. And so, and, and actually breaking out the instructor training dollars versus the attendees. And so we've made some changes for him and his swimmers unit budget code.
Can we increase the numbers?
That's a, it's being negotiated in contract. Health and safety budget, um, so pretty much status quo. As I indicated previously, there's money sitting in capital for some of the agenda equipment that had been requested. Okay, Fire Marshal's Office, uh some minor tweaks to some line items per uh Fire Marshal Nichols's request. Overall, a five point two percent increase. Good job. Even and low. Community affairs, uh significant reduction of twenty-two point four percent. We've taken out the second community affairs officer. Um, and then there were some additional increases that um, our community affairs officer had requested, given the community outreach efforts next year with our funding measures. So a twenty-two point four percent reduction in the community affairs office. Okay, mobile integrated health, this was formerly CARES and this last year was a very small budget which accounted for um a part-time social worker. Now that uh we have Chief Devonbaugh and Chief Winter, this is fully funded to match just about the same amount of money that the county has allocated for MIH. And so um, this also, like the EMS budget, will probably look different next year. But this includes a couple of uh FTEs. Don't know what those are going to look like, but we anticipate the need to upstaff the division. And it also includes uh a line for MIH startup costs and special programs, and that gives uh chief and her team some money to work with to start the program. So you can see a whopping three hundred and thirty-eight point four percent increase in that budget, but just funded as it should be. Training budget, uh, last year, this training budget had four training officers at the request of the consortium. Uh, that didn't come to fruition, and so the consortium, will we get credit for training officers? And so the consortium costs had gone down in exchange for having the training officer. That didn't happen, so the consortium has increased our contribution and we've taken the FTE out. So we have a reduction in FTEs and training back to three, and then we have the cost increases for the consortium. And so overall, uh, there's a thirty-three thousand dollar increase to the budget or three point six percent. Facilities, uh Sean, um, has done a great job reworking the facilities budget since he's been here, working with Director Lee. Um, overall, four point seven percent increase, very minor. Driven mostly by cost increases for goods and services. Fleet division, another well-oiled machine. Um,
He didn't, he didn't even know he made a budget. Fleet oil.
You guys throw me off a little bit. So there have been a few tweaks. Uh Supervisor Brummett has made some uh requested changes to line items. Um, overall, an eight point six percent increase for the fleet division. Anything you want to add, Ken?
Well, it's just, a lot of it's just due to the play sharing rates and the cost of improvement, so appreciate everybody's support.
Logistics. Overall, an eight point six percent increase. Captain, do you think you want to add?
I tried to save money by going with one volume total.
I tried to save money by going with one ply toilet paper. Ended up at eight point six percent. Goes to the bathroom.
It's a false economy.
Yeah. There was a very short period where I was overseeing, working with the support divisions. And I did not know that Captain had changed to one ply toilet paper. And then I was apparently targeted for being cheap, managing the money and buying cheap toilet paper. I had no idea that he had done it, but it was the only thing that was available at the time. So.
And we use twice as much.
The IT budget. All right, here we go. Hope. Hope. Hope had requested another position and because of the focus on. Fulfilling the objectives of the strategic bridge plan and our concern for the financial cliff. It's something we need to look at the following year if things look good financially. It's not to say that we don't need a person in that division, but we don't want to hire somebody and then have to lay them off. So we're going to have to tighten our belts a little bit next year. But. The significant increase to the IT budget comes in the form of our software contracts. And last year, we were budgeted two hundred and three thousand and Hope and Dawn. Projected that that needed to be three hundred and fifty thousand. So cough cough. And we took a look and that is in fact closer to where it needs to be. As we all know, things are changing to. Software as a service. And we buy, we no longer buy it and it's good for ten, five years or whatever. You buy it, you pay every single year. And you get support, maintenance and all of those things, but you're on the hook. So this has. Gotten out of control, but it's necessary. So. But on the auditor side of things. Apparently moving forward, we're actually going to have to break out software as a service. And disclose those to the auditor. They're going to want to see it in its own line item. So Hope had requested that we actually remove the software as a service line item. But it sounds like the auditor meeting requires to actually have that. So this might look a little bit different next year, but I just wanted to point out this three hundred and sixty five thousand dollar increase. Overall, is two things. It's increasing the software as a service, which all of our divisions have software, fleet, logistics. So that everybody is using software. So it's funneling into the line item that Hope and her team manage. The other part of this is the reductions that you saw in the finance division. Those individuals moved over here. So you have. IT or data and GIS that are now. Being represented in this budget. So between those two, software and moving personnel into this budget, it's a it's a. Significant dollar increase to the budget. But overall, forty two point three percent increase to.
Wait, what line item captures cost of storing data on cloud?
Well, it might be the software contract right now.
We, we're not, we're not paying for like an Azure cloud storage or a big blob of storage. Really, what's happening is we're contracting services and part of those services for each individual thing store the data. So for example. There's UKG that we're using in finance and HR. That is its own service with its own storage and all of that is bundled up together as the UKG software service bill. So they're doing the compute, the storage and everything. We're not hosting virtual servers in Azure, which when she might be McKenna, this is more custom. The other thing I would add is some of this software as a service is obligatory. So we don't have a choice and that's going to continue. Things that we post on now, companies will not support. In the coming years and you will be forced to the cloud. And then the very last thing is a lot of the software was branched out into other divisions. And when it came on, it was really difficult to even understand what we had and that made it difficult to support. So Donna and I tried to concentrate everything into one place so that we can have a better idea of what's actually.
We're kind of in a migration phase, if you would, where we used to store data locally. And as we connect with these software companies, data is being stored on their servers. So it's not just data storage alone, but like Office three sixty five, we're paying Microsoft for those. And then for those licenses, a part of those licenses include storage for the individual who has the license. So it's, there's a lot of layers to it. And then we may be, are we doing backups to the cloud yet? So that's another aspect. So we'll back up our system to tape. Or to drive and then we back that up to the cloud and we pay for that too. So there's a lot of, lot of factors. So expect some changes as Hope, you know, you've only been here a year or so now. Hope is still learning our system. And we've been growing exponentially during that period. So this might look a little bit different next year. Things might be broken out, but the costs are the cost. So. Okay. Okay, and then our self insurance program, overall. There's from a budget perspective, it's a ten percent increase. This is actually not our renewal costs. Because our renewal costs have come in below ten percent. But part of the increase here is that we have added people to the budget. So the. Positions that I've mentioned in the highlights, the eight new firefighters, you're adding ten, twelve plus. To the self insurance program. And so our costs are not one to one. So overall, with the increase in FTEs and our normal renewal rates. It's a ten percent increase to our medical program. And I won't go through the line items, but they have been updated to reflect all of the changes and all of the nomenclature that's used. Throughout the twenty twenty four budget. So with that. I will stop talking.
Joe, I guess I lost where which division was in, but I wanted to ask about Valley. There's still a twenty two percent increase for Valley.
Yes.
Division this, but it's there.
So it's operations.
And why, why is?
It's twofold. It's the increase in call volume. So we paid off. So as we get busier, we pay a little more. And they changed their fee structure this year, so the cost for all went up. So just for everybody, everybody is on the same page, we pay two different fees. So because the city of Federal Way was a partner agency in the beginning, we paid one fee for. Per call fee in that area. And then in unincorporated King County and the city of the boys, we pay a different fee. So those fees went up and our call volume went up. So those two factors combined end up being a twenty two percent increase. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Okay. Jen, item seven is public comments. If there are any public comments, they must be related to the reason for the special reading, which is to discuss the. Draft twenty twenty four budget. Everyone in public comments? There's. There's verity. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.